It's not impossible. It's extremely difficult to earn the new Transparency Star Award. And so we're going to strive to earn it. And we've done everything on it except for we haven't. We actually submitted it and we got it back and what they told us was our checks have to be all detailed in Excel and searchable and what we're. It is with the staffing that we have, we haven't figured out. Now Laura is going to work with ENCODE on how to take the ENCODE piece, transfer to an Excel.
I've talked to several cities that have it, which are very limited. They're on ENCODE and it's all very manual.
Oh, really?
Well, I mean, pull it into file, you have to clean up all the page numbers and you have to go back for three years or less, which is several hundred pages.
Yeah, we don't need to add a new bookkeeper just to qualify.
An award, yeah.
Okay, what are there any other recognitions? Are there any other recognitions that we can strive for that are the equivalent of this recognition?
Well, the GFO, GFTFA pledge award, yes. That's it. In fact, I had, I had actually crossed out the earning of it because I didn't think we, we're not going to do that. Laura said, no, let's put it in as a goal because, I mean, as objective, we can still strive to be able to.
I think maybe ENCODE will come up with a better mouse trap, but they will charge $5,000. We'll see.
Okay, so are we satisfied with the expression strive to earn? Do we want to add something that we recognize as achievable? Because I do think that we want to continue to earn the award we received this last year. You know, it's great for Laura to get that recognition. Laura, we're very proud of your efforts on behalf of our community as a whole. Do we put that in here as?
I don't know. We have achieved almost everything and we're practicing everything to this check register thing. So the striving of that has resulted in turning in an application and getting feedbacks as they give them. I think that there's, I think there may even be a revision of this system. You know, I don't know what's going to happen. I'm, I'm, I don't know if you have a recommendation award, I'm okay with what it is.
I don't understand what you're going to say.
Well, we just, we just received a recognition. Bill, do you want to remind us of the recognition that we just received?
Well, we did.
Budget award.
The one right below that, the Government Finance Officers Association budget award. We received that last year and this year. That's also going to be, we'll be recognized if the council leave for that.
Is there anything additional other than the Government Finance Officers Association budget award?
I'm not aware of it. Laura, remind me.
Can I add that's more work?
No, we're not looking to, yeah, to make you work extra.
So it's more work with also the auditor, auditor, sorry, which we did put in our meeting, but it would cost, make the yearly audit increase due to, we just do basic finances. It's just, does this cost?
Okay, is everybody fine with this?
Well.
Mike?
A second, Bob. If the Texas Comptroller Transparency Star Award is, we decided that we're not, not going to do what is required to get it, should we take that bullet off?
Well, we're going to try. It is also five different awards and so there's still an opportunity to investigate whether we can do this. And we haven't given up on it, so.
They just changed it in the last two comments on it too. Everybody are complaining because it made it really difficult. And you have several hundred cities that have the original transparency award and when you look on there now, you have, if you get rid of ISD because they have some help with their software statewide, but there's only like 31 cities that even have the financial side. And then for the most part, they're larger cities that have pre-processed software. So actually here it's, there's going to be some change coming up where they're going to relax.
So keep it strive to then?
This information is on our website. It's important to keep maintaining that, so.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll get that figured out.
And then we were deleting continued funding of the Capital Replacement Fund because we've moved that into a prior category. So that one's out.
Yeah, I moved that to the first one.
Yeah, you moved that to the first one. So that one's gone. Maintain reserves. Okay, are we happy with this? Okay, are there any additional items that we would like to consider for property values and enhanced resources and maintain fiscal discipline? Hey Jake? Maintain excellent infrastructure, buildings, streets and utilities. Slight revision in the first item. So how far along are we, Bill?
Well, we've got the software to do that. I would ask for Brandon on, where he is on that. Obviously, we did get it completed this year. I don't think we'll get it completed this year. We thought we would, but.
Well, it's been a funky year.
Yeah, I mean, Brandon's a little tied up right now.
Yeah, we understand. We want to get that SCADA system going.
I have actually started building some of the background of it for going out to do the inspection with the actual development side and the software, but it's not completely good.
Okay. Where are we going to be with resourcing for the coming year that this is going to be something that's going to be completed, Brandon? Because we want to complete these. We, you know, these are goals and objectives. We expect to meet our goals and objectives and as a community to do better.
Correct. If we can get everybody's staff back like I need, then I can focus on getting this completed. I should have it completed by the end of next year.
Should or will?
Will.
Okay.
A little.
Are we happy with the change then? Second item?
What this is, is this is just a reorientation of the Public Works street maintenance center. Because the Dezavala south through these days, we're, how patient are you in terms of the crack sealing that we're going to do there?
Yes.
And that's all we intend to do there. And then what we, Brandon's assessment, which isn't the same as the formal assessment that he's making, is that we've got to go back over to the west side of the old Chavo Park and start again on this site.
Okay. Where does this leave us with regard to Chavino Creek? Are there streets in good shape? Because we focused on.
There are areas that are not and Brandon has identified those.
Do they need to be included in this portion of our goals and objectives for next year?
I'm actually hoping to try and get to those this year. All we have left is Happy Trail, Workaway and the state side. And then once we're done there, we're going to go over to Chavino Creek here. Majority of the streets in Chavino Creek are actually fairly decent, so there's not as much maintenance as far as cracks and seeping that needs to be achieved there.
Well, then I would say probably I got Chavino Creek in here.
Okay.
Just knowing the workload of what you got going on and how that works, I think it would be fair to say Chavino Creek and the, you know, and the side, and then you prioritize it that way.
Well, it says from, so if we added from east side of Northwest Military to 1604 to Dezavala and Chavino Creek, we don't have to change the rest of the sentences. Is that okay with everybody to insert and Chavino Creek at the end of that section? Okay. Okay, third item. Any changes? Fourth item? Mike?
Where do we stand on that, Luke?
So on the environmental friendly partner options? We have written a task order or scope and we'll send it to KFW engineers because we're looking for them to give us some options.
Okay.
And it's not their priority, right? So.
And it's not going to be done this, this year?
No. So I'm really trying to push them to get the drainage study done. They told me that they will be able to brief that probably first of September, end of August. And had several conversations. Tied in with that is the work we're doing concurrently with Tech Dot. And they're involved in that and they've been a great asset representing us from a city engineer standpoint, holding Tech Dot accountable on the drainage. So we had a big meeting this morning, lasted an hour and a half with Tech Dot and they brought in, this is the first time they brought in their drainage consultants. They brought the district hydrology engineer in and we spent the majority of time talking about impacts of widening Northwest Military Highway, the existing conditions that exist that we know of. There's six areas that we have identified, that we've written descriptions and provided that to them. They're supposed to take that and then provide us some options in terms of what they, what they are going to do to prevent an increase in the stormwater runoff that's already complicating the six areas. And then there are possibly options that we're going to be able to fix a couple of those or at least address some of those if we go. And then the Elm Springs piece is a big one. Anyway, we're moving on on that. KFW is doing great work for us here.
Yeah, they're.
But we haven't had the products.
Good to have an expert.
And so this one, I don't want to derail that. I mean, I want to defer that to the next year.
Okay. Mike, you okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, fourth item, maintain essential services and then we've got one revised bullet and two deleted bullets.
Yeah, that revised bullet doesn't, needs to be tweaked because it doesn't make sense. Continue to take corrective action dead end main issues.
Continue to take corrective action on dead end main issues to lessen flushing and reduce loss rate. Is it on or?
Yeah, we need to tweak that. But I'll reword that. Essentially, Brandon has, these were two objectives that he put in there and he actually did address the dead end issues over there by wagon trail. So that was, wasn't on the objectives last year, but it was something that was, probably should have been and it was the biggest issue.
Did we get it looped? Okay, great.
We got that looped, that quality, that, that was the worst water service we'd had. We had, have we had any complaints since then?
Since then, no.
None from those areas.
Isn't the other one down Cliffside? Is Cliffside still?
Are Cliffside still a problem?
Still the issue.
We haven't really got any.
I have many complaints over on Cliffside.
But we know we have to do it, so.
Well, I've talked to people on Cliffside that have complained about Cliffside and I've said, we're looking at those issues. So they're, they're still aware of them and they're still talking to each other, but they're just not talking to us because they think we're going to do something. How are we going to loop? Are we going to be able to loop Cliffside?
I haven't found a solution 100% on that. I'm still trying to figure out where I can tie it in, but ultimate goal is just to get looped. I'm trying to actually get them off of the alley service. That's where their service runs through is the alley and get them in front. That's where they've got a main that actually goes to the front on Cliffside.
And there's, there's other dead end issues as well. So it's more than just Cliffside. There's a lot of culvers in the northern part of the east side that the, the new hole, I guess is what they call it. The culvers come in and they spaghetti into the culver and what's that?
Cul-de-sac.
Cul-de-sac, yeah.
Culvers, the thing that water goes into when it rains.
I don't know what I'm saying.
Mike was on the water committee. He can tell you about culvers.
And so I don't, you know, some of those, there's, I think there's, we're just trying not to be specific because I'm not sure Brandon for those next year, but we, we have to address the issues and there's, what's the one, what's the worst one that you know of?
Elm Spring particularly has tin clamps that I know just in the cul-de-sac.
Say that one more time. What did, what did you just say?
Elm Spring has tin clamps just on those services in that cul-de-sac.
Repairers.
Repair requirements.
Okay, okay. Yeah, now I understand what you said.
Repair clamps. So basically anytime one of the repair clamp starts leaking again, it's in the middle of the cul-de-sac and it's going to start tearing the street again. So eventually get root. No, there's nothing leaking right now or they've been.
I thought one of the WAC meetings back there was some leakage still.
Correct. We've competed that one. But no, basically the whole goal is to get where the six inch line stops, extend it through the cul-de-sac, off the fire hydrant up on the end, then actually do taxi services for everybody like they should be instead of a spider formation if they want to do a six inch line.
Okay.
So we probably need to reword it to assess and develop a plan.
Ooh, I love that. That's not continued, that's not to continue to take corrective action, but that's to assess and develop a plan for unidentified or identified?
Maybe assess, develop a plan and correct, you know, maybe there's a correct one act, you know, take, take some correction, some action, some area.
Corrective action on already identified areas. I guess it all. Aren't there two loops on Cliffside that need to be tied in?
Okay, so would it be correct to say assess and develop a plan for dead end main issues, continue to take corrective action on dead end main issues to lessen flushing and reduce loss ratio rate? Is that correct? Is that what we're saying?
Couldn't it just be assess and develop a plan to take corrective action on dead end main issues to lessen flushing and reduce loss and you don't have to say it twice? Dead end main issues.
Say that again. Assess and develop a plan.
Say assess and develop a plan to take corrective action on dead end main issues to lessen flushing and reduce loss ratio rate.
Okay. Assess and develop a plan, strike, continue to, take correction action on dead end main issues to lessen flushing and reduce loss ratio rate. Okay, we happy with that?
Assess and develop.
Assess and develop a plan, strike corrective, strike, continue to, and then a plan.
To.
To take corrective action on dead end main and so on.
Then you only say dead end twice.
Yeah. Okay, we happy with that? Are there any other issues that we need to consider concerning our public water infrastructure? We painted all of our tanks.
Well, there's more.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Okay.
And in light of the recent article that came out on SCADA and the problems we're having with SCADA, is that still the best direction for us to be going?
As far as replacing the old SCADA or how else would we control the water system?
There's no other options?
Well, is the old SCADA is still in place right now? That's what the law.
Yes, so Matt and Hamas on the Water Advisory Committee are drilled down into the secure, dissecured SCADA system, big time. And they are, they have whiz, these SCADA guys, they've done testing on it. They're going to do further verification of the security of that system. That article, I mean, I glanced through that and that was SCADA controlling the utility grids and all that stuff. And so top, the article was that the SCADA system is vulnerable and it can be hacked and then it can be taken by terrorist groups or bad players and they can work through that. They were implying that that could be the next place where people attack the United States and try to take down huge grids and so forth. So it's possible, probably not.
Perhaps.
We wouldn't be the most, I would think, obvious target. They could test, you know, and do.
So when is the SCADA system going to be fully implemented?
The new one, right now, they're looking at hopefully start doing actual tests, running them parallel to each other within about a month, probably the first week of July or after, 12th of July. So have everything wired, some tendencies, so they're running parallel with each other. And then it's probably in about a two week period where they run parallel so they can get any bugs worked out of their system or make sure we've got all the correct scales and all the pressure transducers, everything's tied together correctly.
Okay, so before August, the SCADA system's going to be fully implemented. So it's all done. Do we need to continue to monitor that SCADA system going forward into the following budget year? Because the rest of the stuff deals with other things on Public Works and I'm asking, are there any other essential public water infrastructure items that we need to consider under this item? Do we need to continue to monitor that? Are all of our tanks in the condition that we need for them to be in? Do we need to look at a plan to cycle any of our existing water lines that we have in the city? Are there other infrastructure water items that we need to include that we want to identify or begin to plan for in the coming fiscal year?
One thing that I brought up at the last WAC meeting was mainly the ground storage tank at Chavino was looking at, we have it marked as investee. The actual, expanding the size of that tank, we basically had a 278,000 gallon stand pipe there. We took it down to put the Trinity in, we only put back 110,000 gallon tank. So we took out 168,000 gallons of their storage with that water system. Well, if we extend that ground storage tank up another section or two, it helps out with Trinity well because right now that well is turning on and off so frequently that we're going to eventually wear that motor out quickly. So from talking with well experts, they're saying if we add another section for depth on that tank to where instead of just filling from 16 to 21 feet shuts off, we drain it down quickly and then it's got to turn back on to blow up. If we extend it to where it's filling from 30 to 16 feet, it gives a more cool off period because right now it's not getting that cooldown time.
Okay.
That's one of his objectives that he's put in his Public Works water piece, which is investigate that because, you know, we still have to.
Do we want to include that as a goal and objective to investigate? We're not committing to do it, we're just committing to investigate.
There's a number of, that, you can, that's, that's fine. There's a number of, if you've looked at the staff, goals and objectives, there's a number of those that council may want to pull up. And I did not take the liberty to say, okay, I, we have it as a draft objective now, but I think it's really important for the council. I haven't done that. I haven't said, okay, take those staff ones and adopt them. But that would be one that would impact a large amount in the city and I, you know, I'm not supposed to.
Well, the water system pays for it, for that portion of it. So it's, you know, and Brandon's using the resources of the water department to do the implementation. You know, Bill, you've told me that on the water, on the Trinity, pulling the pump, you know, what happens when we have to recomplete and then we can't recomplete and all of a sudden we now lost our well? It would seem like babying that thing makes more sense than not babying the thing.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm fine with that and that is a prepared.
Okay. I've been doing all the talking. Is this something that y'all would think we need to continue, that we need to consider adding as a goal and objective for the coming year? Well. Shell?
Did we not present all of your objectives to the WAC and have them for, to us, things that they recommend?
We just had the WAC meeting Monday.
Okay.
And so we went through that. There was a few comments and some recommendations which we'll adopt, but pretty much we briefed that, got consensus on the waters, goals and objectives. And so that was, it's included in your Dropbox as well as a draft there. We haven't updated that since they were relatively mine.
Because wasn't there another big ticket item that came up at the WAC? That has something to do with ENCODE, SCADA?
No, it had to do with the flow. It's a whole lot.
Oh, no, that's.
That was just.
No.
That's an idea right now.
Okay.
Bob, I was just going to bring up, as far as the Trinity, we had all the issues this year with the fins being clogged and all that that we went through. Are we, is that, is that something we need to focus on for next year as far as you use the word babying, you know, looking at maintaining or testing or preventing? Is there anything that needs to be considered there?
As far as the actual flow of the pump, that'll tell us the how long the screens are on it. And as of right now, we haven't seen an increase in that, but just by monitoring that, that's what the control actually is telling us as well. Kind of, so that information's in there, we can just pull that history out. This year, I'm hoping to get a, it's like a measuring tape to measure like what the water level is inside the well for, just periodically we should go check ourselves to make sure we're testing, checking the data basically, mainly not only just letting the digital stuff run itself.
So it's, I know you're, you're not staff full yet and certainly deal a lot of objectives, but to me, it seems like we need to be specific about doing that, not, I mean, checking those things and having a schedule to check those. It sounds like the pump's going to provide that information, but not letting it get to where it got to this year.
Correct. So basically, I mean, I have the check sheets modified to where I ask them what's the current value, whether it's running or it's not, what's the depth? So each day we're checking what the depth is. And obviously, we'll be able to determine with the numbers from there right now whether it's running or it's not.
Okay.
Are we still hovering at a reduction to basically 50/50 blend?
Yes.
And if the pump flow is still holding about where it was a couple months ago?
Yes.
It's locked back out. So it's long as it hasn't prevented going down. And it's, everything's good.
Not much we can do. It's, what he's saying is with the measurements of the pumpage and the depth are going to be indicators and that's something he's tracking.
So we have a current monitoring program that we, that we've already implemented for the Trinity well.
It's Brandon Pierce.
Well, I mean, but is there something formalistic so that, you know, when Brandon's on vacation, that he can give to, what's the name of the new guy that you're so happy about?
Mark.
Mark, that he could give to Mark and say, Mark, this is the, this is the plan, you know? Are we going to have something like that? Because what if Brandon has to go on vacation or he takes family medical leave because, Brandon, by the way, you can't have any more children than have family medical leave. I'm sorry, but we can't, we can't be without you for three months.
This isn't a requirement. This is over a year period of time, has there been a drop and then you see a, you see a lack of capacity, then you're saying, well, why do I have a lack of capacity? And then it's going to, you know, it's likely to happen over a period of years and then you say, okay, you don't want to pull the pump every, we can't pull the pump every year now. And you can't do those kinds of things.
You just can't go in to do the PM to prevent that. You have to.
Several thousand dollars.
And because we use stainless pipes and, you know.
Yeah, no, we.
There's issues with that. You can't pull it like you used to.
Okay, so is there anything that we want to add as far as maintaining our water system infrastructure? Mike?
I wouldn't have a problem with putting something in here now. We'd have to do it now because he's, there's quite a bit more that's, that's going to be coming up on, from the water committee, I think, but that.
Well, it'd help us if we put a placeholder here so that we, so that we know we're going to come back and look at this and modify it.
Well, that issue about increasing the, for somebody who's had a well and had a lot of trouble with it personally, I mean, there's, it's residential, I'm not talking about the capacity we have here, but it's just, it's just volume differences is all it really is. The more capacity you have to keep that pump from turning on and off, it's going to significantly prolong life of that pump. And right now, that sucker's running a lot.
And a 11 day window to turn on and off over four or nine.
Yeah, it's, that's.
Why did we get such a small tank?
Yeah, what, how did that happen?
That's what the engineers, we did what the engineers recommended.
I'm basically going back to ask the guy that designed it and constructed, if that foundation can handle the weight of extending it up. Because also too, they put the overflow pipe facing the houses, so they've done that.
Okay, so perhaps something like, consider alternatives to address Trinity capacity issues? Is that what you're talking about, Mike?
Uh, not capacity, more.
Trinity storage capacity issues.
Well, tank capacity, yes, first.
To alleviate stress on the system.
Oh, that's going into.
We are already kind of going too far.
That's into the weeds.
Yeah. We have an objective in the water park, yeah.
Well, but this is a goals and objectives.
We're seeing Chavino ground storage tank capacity to increase productivity and life. It's expectancy of Trinity well pumping more. And that's what it firmly says. So I think what you already said was you want to pull that one up and also have that as a council objective. I already wrote.
Is that, is that a council objective? Is that, is that a council objective? I'm asking.
I would say, yeah, since half the city depends on.
Okay, everybody else okay with that? Then Bill, if you would, Xena, do you know where that is and we can pull that up into this segment?
Sorry, I can't.
I, we got it.
Okay, yeah, it's, it's not in our handout.
Well, it is written, five two, second last page.
Okay, not in this one, okay.
And again, these, these director, directorate goals and objectives are included in the budget.
Yeah.
So, I already kind of discussed that.
Perfect, okay, is there anything else? Mike?
Just picky, A S S D S S instead of access and initiate planning with text dot.
A S S.
Oh, yeah. Okay, we're going on, we're now proceeding to item to page nine. Are we still on page eight?
I'm, I'm still talking about the maintain excellent infrastructure.
We're, we're moving.
We're still going on that?
Yeah, we're moving to page eight on that. We, we just finished off the water infrastructure.
Well, that's what I wanted to.
Okay, no, no, we, you have another item for the water infrastructure?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I know that this past, I don't know how long ago it was, we got notices, those of us that are on the water system got notices of issues kind of getting deemed by the state about.
Testing.
Testing. And so I just wanted to know if, and maybe that's encompassed in here and I don't see it, a mechanism by which we're adopting that or addressing that, how it's addressed, and a mechanism by which maybe residents have access to staying on top of that information, being informed aside from just letters. I don't know if that's something that needs to be addressed in here? If it's addressed more fully in your bullet points?
Well, underneath like the, the one as far as like making sure of maintaining. Maintain 100% compliance of all state regulations associated with water system. That's like underneath one of my goals and objectives. That's probably where that would actually fall at. Because they, they basically went through and switched up all the total local rules and they asked us to resubmit new monitoring plans and stuff like that. Well, what it came down to was, we have 706 connections, but we serve over 1,000 populations. Well, they had so many times where they were going back and forth between population and connections. If you have less than 1,000, then you only have to do one mon, one monthly sample. But if you have over 1,000 in population, you're supposed to take two. Well, they kept going between connections and population. And then later on, I called TCQ was verifying and that's when I started collecting the two samples back. Because everything is supposed to be going based on population, not on connections. Because we could have fallen either direction on that. If we went up based on connection, we were listing down, we go by population, we're supposed to have two samples. So.
So going forward, we're doing two?
Correct, so we've been taking two. We're on top of, we're even sometimes I take more than two samples just to show that we are trying to do our due diligence to make sure we have a safe system for our residents.
And I, I haven't looked online recently and maybe Mr. Comer knows, having served on the Water Committee, I don't know, just where residents can go to maybe just find good information. Maybe it's something that is just to be included in the communications component? Maybe it's something that is infrastructure for the Water Committee, I don't know.
For that particular item, we put it online and sent letters.
It's on the website, yeah.
And in fact, it's, we're going to have a, this explanation again at the City Council. Is it gonna be in the agenda under the City Manager Report? And, you know, this one request from Maggie that gets pulled out of the City Manager Report and then we sit and we explain it into there. So, that's the intent for that and.
Okay, no, no big deal, just, just, just some kind of easy access for communication for residents. So when they get a letter, sometimes, you know, they, sometimes mail just doesn't get looked at. But, you know, if they're following along on any of our digital means, then, then it's easy to go and view.
It wasn't punched on my end.
No.
Of course, that would've gone everybody's.
Right.
They didn't really need to see it. I, I know it was put on, on, it was on the front page of the City's public study. It was his first, it was right up there. And of course, we got the call and it's sort of.
Okay, are we now ready to go to page nine?
Okay.
Nine. Replace this case system and then the next item is.
So, the, the assess existing street lights without savings and, you know, I don't consider that we completed that. You know, we've been working with CPS and every light that they replace, they're replacing it with the.
LED.
LED, so we know that's going on. But again, that's on our list of things to.
Couldn't you get a grant for that at one time and do some?
We may have before I got here. I just know that it's their practice now that they, you know, cross the entire region.
Yeah, Bill and I've had conversations with CPS on this and we've been trying to negotiate getting into the system faster and they explained that if, if you have 12-year-old little boys and BB guns, that as those lights go out, they're replacing them with LEDs. I'm just teasing.
Or girls.
Or girls!
Guns work too.
Anyway, the next, the next bullet, we've actually initiated assessment requirements for the Northwest Military NPO. How expect to complete it next year?
How's that different from the last bullet on previous page? And blue bullet down below.
On page eight?
Maintain excellent infrastructure.
Okay, we just said, okay, wrong. Okay, how's that different from this one? Or is this, just looking at water?
No, they're continuations. The, the stuff at the top is just continuation from page eight.
Assess and initiate planning with text dot. Okay, so one is the city's requirement and the other piece, we may need to reword that.
Just for water?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I think, I think you do need to look at that.
Make sure that we get the audio so everyone can.
Yeah, no, no, appreciate it. And we might all raise our voices a little bit just to ensure that we're gonna get as much coverage as we can. We unfortunately don't have the microphone system that we have behind the dais. Okay, so.
I think what we need to do is take out the assess and, and then we need to change the order of that so we complete the assessment, then you initiate planning.
Okay.
Okay, so that was the intent. And we're actually, are in the middle, we're in the beginning stage of that right now.
Will we finish that, this budget cycle or will we not?
The, the, the assessment, and I don't know that it'll be finished because they're talking about a 2020 project and they're, they're talking, they gotta get to 30% design and then, I mean, it's fairly complicated and then there's a bidding process. We have to determine whether we're going to join them in their bidding process so that they take care of relocating or whether we're going to do it. There's a lot of parts to that and it may take over, may take over two years. Is that fair?
Correct, if we decide to do it ourselves, we have to have our contractor in and out before their construction. So, if that's the case, then we'd have to move quickly on getting our stuff designed and then get constructed and get out before they get their contractor in. And they're looking in, what, 2019, 2020, the start time.
Okay, what are our engineers telling you at this time, Bill?
They're monitoring us like we are at the same meetings and, you know.
Are they, are they telling us we should do this independent or are they telling us we should do a tag along?
We're not very close to making that assessment.
Okay.
We have to determine what lines are in conflict in the first place. We won't know that till they actually show us profiles as far as where the road actually ends up in the way you do and then how the driveways get cut if our water is even being impacted. If they cut the driveways back and were deep enough, fine, leave it in place, we're not gonna mess with it. But if they're cutting two feet and that they just barely six inches of cover, then we need to probably rethink about the location of the line.
They're gonna give us options. And so, this is all the meeting we had today. They completed a level of survey, you see all the little pink flags out there right now? So there's survey crews out there looking at utilities. And so, they've included our water lines in that survey piece. Second piece to that is, is the potholing and then figuring out very specific locations where that is. And based upon that, there's a design that has to be done, 30% design of what they're going to do. And then from there, there's individual pieces of the drainage as well as the driveways and all the pieces to that.
Okay, in light of your meeting today, are you telling us that you need to rewrite this and come back to us at the next meeting and tell us what you think this should say? Or are we prepared to rewrite it this evening?
We, it's good like it is, other than take out.
Take out assessment.
I'm gonna move, I'm gonna change the order of this. Complete the assessment is the first one. Then initiate planning with text dot on relocation portion of the water. And then complete the engineer study of Elm Springs, right? That's all, all three are related. And so, you know, even the.
So tell me how you want these to read then?
Exactly as they're written.
Except for the, second to last one, we're gonna take out as an assess and where you're just gonna start it out with initiate planning.
And that goes up.
And that's gonna be.
I'll change the order.
Okay.
In, in their surveying that they're doing, just from my understanding, is the, it, I understood it was gonna be pole to pole? So they're, they're assessing where the utility lines and stuff are? So is that just mass cutting of the trees or is that, are they treating the trees like a utility too?
Oh, they, no, yeah, they're treating, they've done a tree survey already. And so, every conversation I have with them, they say as many trees. So where they put the sidewalk, how the drainage considerations? And so, we were talking about drainage today. And that came up, well, if you put stormwater, pipes underneath there, that's gonna take out trees. So, you know, well, you need to give us options. We're gonna have to be able to, and there's gonna be public input to this too. So, there, a big piece of this is, is having some sessions where they present the designs and we do public input and get citizens' input to this.
Okay, have y'all started the planning process or we're going to start that in the next fiscal year?
We've had two meetings with all the groups. And so, I guess we have started the planning process.
So we're gonna continue the planning process as opposed to initiate it? That's, I'm just asking.
Well, we really haven't initiated any planning with text dot on relocation portion of the water.
You've got, you've got three more months to sure.
So we're gonna complete the survey.
Okay.
Initiate planning with text dot on this because we won't get it completely.
Okay.
We think we can complete a engineer study of Elm Springs to provide drainage solution. We think we can do that, but there may not be.
But we won't know until after an engineer study or, or what?
Well, the KFW engineers will be able to provide part of that. But Elm Springs needs to be informed by the. The drainage calculations that are gonna come as a result of, if I widen this, the flow levels that are going to increase, how are they gonna do that? Where, how, are we gonna, are we gonna detain the water or are they gonna move it? Because if, you know, like we were talking to them about the house that's on Northwest Military Highway that water now, stormwater off Northwest Military Highway floods through the yard and it goes all the way around. And so, it seems like an easy solution to just kind of re-channel that down to the, there's a, there's a runoff about 300 yards away, 200 yards away. And then, part of the question that they're, they're gonna figure out, well, okay, if you increase, if you channel that now, we're not doing downrange because downrange, you already have an issue at Turkey Creek where we had a storm where it was two inches in an hour and we had a stranded vehicle last year because they tried to drive through it. So, by increasing the non-verbious, impervious cover of Northwest Military Highway, we already know that that's gonna, that's gonna increase that flow on Turkey Creek unless they do something to detain or do something with the water. And that's where KFW engineers is great because they're, we're holding, you know, we're, and Brandon, we're challenging them. You know, you just can't do this without engineering considerations for solutions.
Yeah.
But, but there, as a result of that, in addition to Elm Springs, we, we may have to look at Turkey Creek. And that one may not be, that may be culvers underneath, that may not be as hard as some of the others, but.
Okay, are we fine then and ready to go to page 10? We completed the first item, the next item, surveyed Chavano Park businesses concerning city support. And then slight modification. Are we happy with those changes?
Yeah, and that was a goal, an objective this year to survey businesses. And we haven't gotten to that frankly. We did update the business directory, we did include it in the Chavano Park resident directory, but we wanna continue to maintain that. And our, my objective is to, it's at least to maintain a list every year so you're not starting from scratch two years from now or earlier. And we wanna keep it up to date.
Well, from the standpoint of surveying our businesses, is that a continuing goal of the community? That we want to, we wanna know what they're thinking and what they're, what we're doing right and what we're doing wrong? We don't wanna wind up with a bunch of strip, strip centers like a lot of communities that are just empty. And if we survey them, they know, we know what they think they need from the police and emergency support and what we can do as a community to enhance their retail and business opportunities. Is it, would that be true or false? So is, is this something that we should do every year?
Yeah.
Okay, okay?
We just haven't been able to do it yet.
We haven't, plus, you know, there's. That's the number one thing we wanna do, I can do it.
We just have to prioritize it, right?
Yeah.
It hasn't been.
Good. Okay, enhance the city image, page 11. Any item, any question on the first item? Second item? Coordinate with Bitter Blue the completion of the sidewalk trail north from Lakosoma to Slatter Creek.
Yeah, because we're not doing it now. And they've actually picked up the agreed upon cities portion and they're funding it. They've actually, I went, Brandon and I went and drove out there today. We happened to drove through the trail system behind, bit in the manner between the church property. We've driven, I drove my truck almost, well, I've driven my truck all the way through. So, they poured two sections of the sidewalk. They're working on other sections and they were quite, you know, pretty fast all down. So that's gonna be done and you'll have a sidewalk basically all the way to Huntington. And then, along 1604, from the retention basin by Slatter Creek, you have a sidewalk that goes all the way to the Huntington entrance already. They, they built that last, you know, in the last six, eight months. So then you really only have the gap between Huntington entrance on 1604 and the Huntington entrance at, you know, near Pond Hill Road. And so, there's a change in plans, they're gonna try to go through the greenbelt up to the homeowners, the, the Salas Parkway basically right there and then pick up on 1604 to avoid that significant grade challenge in that 22-acre lot. And I don't know the timeline on that, so that's really coordinating with them and pushing them to help them facilitate that.
What's the width on that?
Six foot.
Six foot.
Yeah, but one of the things you just said was you drove all the way down there and you pick up. Is that gonna be accessible for vehicles in the future? Because we certainly don't want our teenagers driving between those two things because they can or because they've heard the city manager does.
Yes, and it is gonna be, it will not be possible to completely block it off. And, and it, it may be problematic in that it's a sidewalk, it's not asphalt and it's not measured for that. We want it to be, you know, we wanna, if you drive a whole bunch of stuff on it, you're gonna, I'm not driving on the sidewalk. It's a sidewalk, it's not asphalt and it's not measured for that, we want it to be, you know, we wanna, if you drive a whole bunch of stuff on it, you're, I'm not driving on the sidewalk now, I'm driving on the trail, it's been cleared associated with that. Part of the sidewalk is, is parallel to an existing utility trail. And so naturally they won't drive on that, but if someone were to drive in the woods portion of that, they're, you're gonna be half on the sidewalk, half not, you know, there could be some issues.
Okay, are there any landscaping considerations as far as that portion of the trail is concerned?
I don't think there's a need for that, you, you basically got a six-foot sidewalk with three feet on each side, in some places you have more. There's, and, and the way it goes through the woods, it's beautifully landscaped natural.
Okay.
Where those, where, where it's in those sections. There'll be some maintenance concerns once it gets done, but we'll have to go through.
Who, are we safe responsible for the maintenance?
Yes. And so.
Be a long walk for the weed eater.
Well. Brandon has, has an objective to purchase a utility vehicle that would be able to go back there and do that. I don't know that that's a requirement yet, I think that we're going to build it and then later see what we need. But we do need to assess, you know, a, a large portion of that is accessible even by ambulance or truck. But some of it is gonna be tougher, and we need to figure that out. I think that's one of those, build it, work on it, and then we see where we are, and then the demand or the need will emerge or it won't.
Okay.
But we thought about primarily not just, I mean, I've walked it many times, it's not the Florida walk from where you had access. The bigger issue is if someone were to get hurt in there, are you gonna evacuate them out? Where can you take the ambulance? How do you maintain the tree, trimming the trees so it doesn't overgrow over time?
How far is it from Lock Hill Soma to basically Northwest Mountain Highway?
I'm gonna guess a mile, but this, this piece of, that I'm talking about is, it winds up in.
It's meandered.
Meanders about, but maybe it's a half mile, maybe it's a little six tenths of a mile. And then, then you pick up on the sidewalks that exist already on Pond Hill, Willow Wood, all the way to Northwest Mountain Highway.
Okay.
And so a sidewalk contemplates walking, are people gonna be able to ride their bikes on it?
Yes. Yes, I mean, but, you know, I wish it was eight feet or even higher, you know, bigger, then you start getting into eighty-eight considerations and cost factors. And, you know, it's not like you, it'll, if someone's walking and a bicyclist goes there, you know, they'll, they'll have to slow down and do all that, but it's, it should be manageable.
Okay, anything else on this? Okay, three more items, a pavilion, maintain Tree City USA, permanent green space on the municipal track. Any additions, deletions, modifications?
I don't see how a pavilion is going to maintain a rural atmosphere or improve the city image, so I'm not real sure why that's in this location.
Okay.
Is this gonna be impacted, I would assume, to by some hearings on the amending the town plan?
Well, yeah.
Or is it not? I mean, is this something that we're focusing on and we're agreeing to and making a consensus on, or are we trying to?
Well, it's been in the, it's been in the goals and objectives for the last two years, this is the third year that it's been in there.
I know it has.
And, you know, we've, we've talked about a pavilion and we've talked about we don't wanna cut down the trees. And we've had a lot of community events where a pavilion would have been a very nice resource to have had.
My question was, is this going to be impacted at all by the public hearings on the town plan?
That would be up to council on whether they think that it needs to go back to our citizens.
Are we gonna ask for input from residents? Are we gonna get that resident input from the town plan hearings or are we not? Because I, I haven't had any residents saying anything to me about a pavilion, that doesn't mean much, I'm one person up here. So if we, if, are we, is this just us coming up with this? Or are we going to contemplate what might be coming out of the town plan hearings?
Well, I don't care if it's discussed at the town plan hearings, I will say this last election, I had many more people tell me that they would like to have a pavilion.
So if we have a bunch, if we have a bunch of people that come to the town plan hearings and tell us we wanna have a pavilion or we want X, Y, Z?
Or it could be a council decision, either way.
Well, my point is, is if, I'm not inclined as a council person, if we don't get any input from residents saying anything about a, a pavilion or a green space or anything with respect to muni tracks, then I'm, I'm not inclined to include it as an objective. That's my point and my perspective as an individual council person.
Well, at Arbor Day, I talked to, you know, hundreds of people about pavilions and hope for a pavilion to get us off of the blacktop. Because it would be an easier opportunity for us to come together as a community and to give us some additional parking. Our community events are very well received, and right now we use our parking lot as the resource to entertain those activities.
I'm not, I'm not touching on whether or not they're well received, I, I think my point is kinda clear. It's just, are we gonna try to include resident input or we not?
Well, we've received resident, I've received resident input for the last two years on this.
Okay, so how, that, that's one person, I'm one person who hasn't received any.
So I, I've received quite a bit as well.
So have I.
And there's no doubt about it, the, the thing about the hearings is, as we know with the original town plan, is we had very little input. We had very few people that show up to that. And it's not a wide array of, of opinions, unfortunately, it's a very small number. So that's, that's, that's the fear I have, but we, I have personally had many discussions in the last year. And I've had a lot of positive feedback regarding the parking lot, number one, and a pavilion. So whether those people would show up for a hearing, I can't tell you, but I can tell you I've gotten a lot of feedback from many, many residents.
So.
Okay.
So I think with that being said, I think we leave as an objective.
Okay, Tree City USA, we still like that?
Yeah.
Mike and I have talked about also receiving a recognition from the National Wildlife Conservation Society. Takes a hundred points, probably really takes more like a hundred and thirty points. The city of Chavano Park probably in its pocket already has a hundred and forty points?
Yeah, I think we kind of, I think we could see about a hundred and twenty to a hundred and forty points that are either there or very just easily get, doesn't cost anything.
Without any cost, yeah. Is that something that, you know, that's an environmental recognition for our community? Is that something that is beneficial, is that a goal that we would like to consider in the next year?
Yes.
Sure, that sounds good.
I don't either, what are the parameters, what does it, what does it mean?
National Wildlife Conservation Society.
So is there a document or anything that might?
Yeah, Mike has a, a list of things that we could consider that he could circulate to Bill and Bill could provide to you.
I can forward, yeah, I still have, is it, is it, is it, is it electronic document, I can forward it to the.
But it sounds good.
It, it's, 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 it's a friendly kind of thing, I know, we kind of were talking about it to the point of, I know the mayor and I were talking about it. It's just very informal about whether we wanna like try and focus it on a citizen-driven thing or bring it through the council. And I don't know if we just really, since y'all haven't seen it, obviously, it's not.
Counsel it.
Yeah, but, I mean, it, it's really kind of a no-brainer, it's, it's almost like the tree committee, it doesn't really require a lot. A lot of stuff that we already have in place.
It, it really comes down more to support securing National Wildlife Conservation recognition as a community.
Should that go through the tree committee?
No. The tree committee works well with it, because one of the things you have to have is scheduled events or, or public involvement type seminars or whatever, and the tree committee would be a good place to, to do that.
Okay.
And, and certain places, it's, it's fairly simple. But, you know, I, I haven't, I honestly have not gotten into it yet.
Yeah.
We have looked at it, I know that we, look, I know, I know Vicki is interested in it, and she has, I think she has discussed it informally with some of the tree committee.
The Arbor Day event satisfies a significant portion of the requirements, we're already doing that.
So we wanna consider Wildlife Conservation Society recognition?
Yes.
And I will pull it out of order and then we can get it tomorrow, the next day. I'll just send it to you.
And then one that's not on here, and I don't know if it's in your objectives, is whether or not we wanna work on more fire-wise on the municipal track.
Okay.
Do we get recognition for that, is it a, something we wanna consider?
Well, actually, that, those types of programs would also help with, I would imagine, Tree City USA and National Wildlife Conservation Recognition.
I think it's harder than to a certain extent, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
So it doesn't need to be a separate item?
No, I don't, I don't think so. I honestly don't know, I haven't, I wasn't.
What do you want to include, recognition of the community as a firewise community?
Don't we already have that?
Yes, sir.
Is that in here as a goal?
I can't imagine we need to.
No, we've already got it.
Well, then we would maintain recognition as a firewise community.
We, we currently are maintaining it, we recertified for this year already.
So we don't need to.
Okay, but then we need to have money in a budget and if we wanna continue on the track to clear it for firewise, no?
That would be something additional, we, we maintain our firewise stuff by hours that we spend in some of our chipper day events. And our educational stuff that we do at every city event through that, that would be additional. I mean, you would get credit for it, maintaining that is something we are striving to do if you wanna keep that as, if that's objective, no issue with that. It's like maintaining the, some of the other recognitions, Tree City USA, there's annual requirements, but, but the big ones we've achieved. So now it's just a matter of mostly the education requirements which we fulfill at the, at the city events. And then the chipper and some of the, we have to expend some monies, but it's. They require us to spend two dollars per.
Person.
Person. And we use our brush pickup cost that we do twice a year in that. And then they give us credit for man-hours that we invest in education, chipper day, the municipal track, the, the piece that we cleared. Use the hours for that, when Brandon goes through and maintains it, we'll use his guys' hours as part of our recertification to, to reach that two dollars per person.
Okay, so, un, behind maintains Tree City USA recognition, Michelle, are you requesting that we insert maintain firewise recognition? And then if we're going to maintain both of those, then we should probably also maintain scenic city recognition.
Yeah, and I don't know, Curtis is not here, whether that's annual certification, I don't think it is. I think the, the only thing is, is you're gonna go to a different level.
Well, or we lose it.
Hard to get to.
Yeah, we, it's a five-year recognition, you lose it at the end of the process and we have to continue to maintain it, or we're going to lose it at the end of the, you know, we can't just leave it alone for five years and then say, oh, yeah, we're gonna, we, we did it again. I think there's a maintenance requirement, and at the end of five years, we tell them what we've done and then we get it again.
I'm not sure.
We can confirm that.
How far into the five years are we?
One year.
I'll just want to know.
And then the other one would be support securing National Wildlife Conservation recognition. Support securing National Wildlife Conservation recognition. And that brings us to consider permanent green space on the municipal track and any other additions that y'all would like to add. Are there any other items? Okay, if there are no other items, we're on to page number twelve. I think we're gonna get through by thirty, I hope. Promote effective communications and outreach with citizens. Implement a city communications plan, are we fine with that? Kevin?
That assumes you're gonna bring us.
Yes.
Before the festival years.
Yes, that's a July, June item.
Okay, next item, install an electronic marquee for city hall.
And what did we discuss about whether or not that's legal according to our ordinances?
Well, our ordinances can be, accommodate the city in all cases, just as we do with the banners. Banner's not permitted in the city, except that they're permitted for city functions and for, for activities at the city. So, you know, we, we can do this, the question is, do we want to do this? It would certainly make, it would, you know, we don't have Willie here anymore, Willie was our sign man and.
I'm sure Brandon knows the alphabet.
Brandon knows the alphabet, but Brandon's got other things that he stood on.
Brandon's been the guy, actually, even, he took it over from Willie because, you know, you really need Willie doing other things, so.
And we need Brandon doing other things.
And we need Brandon doing other things.
He ran on the water.
This, this is something we, I think.
I agree.
Okay.
Is this in violation in any way of?
It is, we have to.
No, no, it's.
No, no.
I will be the stick in the mud once again, that we may think that this is a good idea, but what do residents think? I'm not sure that, I personally don't want an electronic marquee, maybe it's in the best interest of city staffing, I don't know. I've yet to see that, but.
I think my, my biggest consideration is not, the fact that somebody has to a little bit change it, is I think you provide more effective communications and will be more timely. And, I mean, I drove by there this afternoon and it still says, oh, the wax. But, you know, I call Brandon or anyone, because I know what he's doing, and it's just, it's a, you know, there's a, it's a, it's a simple task, it's hard to keep up with.
I think we're talking about a, a communication strategy, it, what you're saying, I think it's a big part of it. Now, I also go back and I say, we're, you know, we're trying to be this old city and keep it natural and all that. And my fifteen-year-old, you know, likes the, the manual way, but I, I think it's time to make a, make a change and go with it. But that's.
Well, I, I'm gonna go kind of in the middle on this one. Yeah, it's, it would be great for the information and getting better information faster. But from Mary Ann's point of view, if you're across the street looking at that thing, I don't know if you wanna do that.
Well, the, the other thing too is, we're scenic city right now, right?
Not very scenic.
It is scenic to me.
No, but I'm talking about the marquee.
I, I think that it is, I think it's a lot more scenic than an electronic one like the one going into Inwood and.
That's, that's what I meant, the electronic to me is, but, but I think that's, that's why it's kinda difficult. I, I lean towards it, but I think there is, there is gonna be some people who are gonna not wanna be looking at it, you know, you know, you got.
Maybe it's a, a web survey.
The other thing that I don't like about those things, and I know they've come a long way in recent years, but it, it just seems that invariably it's like, you know, spends, whatever the one where you spend and you, you guess the words, you know.
Right, a light bulb goes out.
Yeah, there, there, you know, that, or not really, it's not a light bulb, it's all LED digital.
Right, right.
It's a circuit that goes out, you know, now, trans, transformer, something like that, and you have all these misspelled or missing words and stuff like that, they look like jackals.
Well, the good news is the technology's a whole lot better than it was ten years ago.
But there's still a lot of them that don't, I mean, Vicki's got one right now that, that does that on one of her cleaners, that, and it's, it's state of the art, thousands of dollars, and it goes out all the time.
We'll buy it at Costco and we'll pay the extra dollar for the three-year warranty.
No, use American Express.
Not anymore.
And American Express.
No.
And American Express. Yeah, you have to use Visa now.
Either way, I would go on record as saying that this, the pavilion, stuff like that, let's do a web survey and ask residents to tell us what they want.
I can do a web survey on this when Curtis is back.
I think we just make a decision.
I just, I don't think we go to the citizens for every single thing we do. I just, I just think that's something we have to make a decision on.
As much as we may hate it, electronic marquees have become a part of the, of this century, of the 21st century, and that's just where we are unfortunately.
No, I don't want anything that's neon flashing lights. I mean, I think there's, I would like to see some proposals come back that we all feel comfortable with. That's, that's low-key but very communicative, but yeah, certainly, I don't think anybody wants anything like that. I know.
I guess I just don't understand the ease with which we can get input from residents, why we wouldn't ask them. And I would just.
Because they elected us to represent them.
I agree. And, and yet, I think they like for us to listen to them. And so the ease with which we can get that information, I would just like to encourage us to consider doing that and allowing residents to give us some input. I recognize where the finals say. I recognize they elected us to make decisions.
Well, this is Bill's recommendation and, you know, he's the one that at the end of the day is responsible for making sure. And this is a part of that communications scheme. How do we reach out to our citizens? This is a place, and the really, I think the question becomes, do you have only one electronic marquee or do you put in two? So that it's at the different ends of the city and people can, people don't have to go by city hall because not everybody comes by city hall.
But these are our objectives, right? This is not a recommendation from Bill. These are our objectives, correct?
This is Bill's recommendation to city council to be an objective, exactly.
But we.
Or ours that we.
We eventually, we, we, we adopt.
I'm not going to put this on Bill, this is on us. These are our objectives. This is what we're consensus building here to come to an agreement on. This is us. And.
Well, I don't disagree with Bill and I'm glad to have his input to rec, to suggest this this year.
Bill, these are your recommendations or these are recommendations and objectives we gave to you?
They're your objectives.
Exactly.
I thought this was a, everyone had consensus. I wouldn't have put it on here.
Right.
I mean, I, I thought, okay, everyone was kind of head nodding, we were going to do this, so I.
Well, but you guys brought it up. Public Works brought it up.
Yeah, we brought it up.
Because Will has been saying for years he wanted an electronic sign.
Yeah, and I'm not trying to lay it off on you, Bill. Not at all. I support the idea.
I don't personally like the idea of an electronic sign because I don't, I think it's like too much, but I think it's the best way to communicate on a marquee now, so. And I think there's different levels of what it can be, not the showy, bright, obnoxious.
I mean, we can pay for it by selling everything to sell slurries.
Well, why don't we do this? I mean, why don't we, instead using the word install, let's pursue the options and come back to council.
Investigate.
Oh, I love that, investigate.
And then let's make a decision, make sure everybody's comfortable.
Chris, the problem is, Bill, how much do these six cost?
Depends.
Because you have to have money to budget for it and it goes to Mike's concept of, hey, we want to allocate all the money. And we can move money from our capital improvement funds to pay for this under a budget amendment. But, you know, investigate's the easy way to, to roll into this and we can consider it as budget amendment in November, December, if that makes sense. Is that, is that something that works for everybody?
Well, I could also.
Mary Ann, does it work for you to investigate?
Yeah, to me, an investigative part would be to send out a quick survey to residents and say, hey, let us know.
I would lean towards, if we're going to investigate, we should budget it as well, thinking that, you know. In other words, avoid the budget amendment.
Well, we know, we know a consensus of council is interested in doing that.
Yeah, so I would include it in the budget.
Then come up with a number. But then you've got to give us options.
Right, right, of course.
Okay. Are we fine with that?
Investigate.
Investigate.
I think that's a good plan.
I think we just kind of agreed to investigate.
Investigate?
Yes.
Investigate options for an electric marquee for city hall. Okay. I'm good with that.
Okay, do you have that? Okay, develop a city communications policy. Do we want a city communications policy? We've talked about this for two years.
Publications.
I mean publications.
Yes.
Do we want a city publications policy? We've talked about this for two years. We haven't done anything. Do we want to delete it? Because we haven't done one.
Well, I thought I was on a subcommittee with Mayor Pro Tem, but we, that I guess is not true.
We were.
We never did anything on it.
Do we want to pick it back up?
Oh, was that last year?
Oh, that was two years ago.
Two years ago?
Yeah.
What's the end stage of a publications policy? What, what's it going to address?
Newsletter.
Who gets to put what in the newsletter and when and all that good stuff? I don't know.
I don't know that we have any indication that it's broken, Mike. So I, that's why I raised the point of, do we want to do this? If it ain't broke, don't fix it. Are we fine with where we are as a council? And strike this. What do y'all think? Bob?
Is there a policy that says who gets to put what? I'm sorry.
No, 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 I'm, I'm, go ahead. I'm, I'm just.
I mean, I, I, is there a policy that says this?
Council members submit and.
So anybody can submit and, and it's just that none of us really do.
Community organizations have been submitting and council members have been submitting and those are the only ones that have been submitting. And that seems to be what the policy is, Mary Ann, by default.
Well, residents submit too.
Well, I'm not, all I'm asking for is, is there a policy that's in writing that everybody can look at and see and knows and understands?
Prayer.
No.
Well, that was a community event, I would call that.
There's another, again, one issue where there was someone that submitted an article over on there was not accepted.
What happens?
Charged and a lot of.
Right, what happens is when someone does submit something that we, or whoever decides who gets what in there, that it becomes a problem. And if there's a policy that we can look at that says, this is good, this is not.
And you can have lots of different policies, but if you haven't really had any, if you, you know, if you hadn't broken down yet, did you really have to have a policy? Because it seems like it's working efficiently. We would all be hearing, I think, about it if it wasn't working efficiently. You know, Bill's doing, and I think that the, the well-worn past says that Bill is doing a good job. If Bill's doing a good enough job.
Could we reject it? Actually, didn't push back very hard.
Okay. So.
Yes, because I told them not to do a politically charged article and they just did it anyway. And then the other thing is whether or not you're on council and whether or not you can advertise or write articles a certain number of days out.
But we have a policy on that that says that you can't do that. You can't write, pardon? Yeah, we have an ordinance that says we can't submit as elected officials within the election cycle.
That's an ordinance?
Yeah.
That would be stupid.
It's March.
Should be a policy.
Yeah, but it, it is a policy that's in an ordinance. So do you want to leave this in here or do you want to just omit it? And if, if we need it, we'll add it back in and we'll do it.
Bill, do you think you need one?
I don't need one now.
I'd admit it.
Okay, are we fine with that?
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to, we're going to delete that one. Okay, four city events. Are we fine with the four city events?
Yep.
Okay, maintain a new and approved.
Why don't we have a Fiesta event?
Oh, Mary, no, no, thank you, thank you, Mary Ann. We have the Ray Faeo. We have the Ray Faeo for the 300th anniversary of San Antonio. I'm glad you mentioned that.
What do you mean, what do you mean, we have the Ray Faeo?
Ken Flores is a citizen of.
Oh, we have a Santa Park resident.
We have the Ray Faeo for the 300th anniversary of San Antonio.
Okay.
That's pretty cool, so maybe this is.
That is pretty cool.
Maybe this is a one, maybe it's not a, a annual event, well, it could be.
Why not?
But maybe, maybe it could be, yeah.
It could be.
Warren always wanted a Fiesta event, but there's so many.
The problem is fitting it in.
And fitting it in the schedule.
But, but it's early and.
But if you have Ray Faeo, why not do something?
Why couldn't you coordinate Fiesta with Arbor Day?
Well, Arbor Day happens on Earth Day and that's a specific calendar and Fiesta happens at different times.
Isn't it the same, it's the same, it's like the same timeframe?
It's not always, but it's near.
Is it that close?
You, you might, you might wind up having an event two weeks apart.
Look it up, couldn't we?
That could be a little.
Well, Clark High School's here, the band can come, Blackman Clark can perform, gets kids an opportunity. You know, it's, it's something that we could do and something that we don't have to do next year, the year after, but.
So you're saying you want to do five events?
Yeah, I think.
I'm not saying that, just saying.
But I am.
And Mary Ann wants to share.
Bill, I'm sorry.
You're going to do that.
All in favor?
Pardon?
I'm not in favor of another event.
Okay, well, let's, let's look at what we can do.
It's hard. I mean, it's, it's, it's a sequence of, you hit Arbor Day and then right there.
Yeah.
Independence Day. We don't actually hold Arbor Day event on Earth Day, do we? Earth Day is like usually like in the middle.
No, we picked, it would happen to be on it this year, right, but not, not last.
Not always that way, so we've not always had.
It's always on the Saturday before or after. It's in the same week.
Okay, but we're not having it on Earth Day, so there's no requirement to have it on Earth Day, Arbor Day. There's no requirement.
No.
Then we need to just combine, that's it. We combine Fiesta, Arbor Day. I think it'd be a great thing to combine the two events. I don't think we should have another.
I would agree with that. And the other thing about trying to do a separate event is you've already got Clark has, Clark High School has a designated Fiesta event called Fun Day Sunday.
Yes.
And it's all revolves around their bands and all that and I, I don't think you could pull them away for another thing as well, so.
Yeah.
We solicit sponsors for Arbor Earth Day.
Yeah.
And we might not be able to.
Get them to.
Change the whole, you know, concept and combine it with another event. It may not.
If it gets watered down, then it's not a.
Not contribute as much or less, or is it really focused on the Earth Day, Arbor Day, Tree City, Earth Cycle?
Earth Day is the 22nd of April, so we probably look at the 21st of April. The first day of Fiesta is the 20th in 2018.
That's a tough one.
Well, I don't know, if we don't have to make a decision right now, why don't we just kind of punt this thing?
Or, or we may be in a position to just support Fiesta 2018 and Ray Faeo. Just support as opposed to, we're going to sponsor an event. Is that something that works?
I mean, part of it is if you want people to get involved and you want, you need to give them additional avenues for which they can get involved. Ray Faeo is one, excellent one. A residence coming up with, what is it, metal?
Fiesta.
Fiesta metal.
Designing one or something?
Stuff like that. Those are additional ways you can get folks. We have a lot of artists that live in the community, so.
Mary Ann, do you, would you think about this for the next meeting as far as something you might recommend for us?
Oh, perfect.
I love the artist idea. No, I, I think that that's awesome.
Well, you get the kids involved, you get the artists in the.
Oh, yeah.
Blackman kids, you get the hobby.
Well, the main thing is not impacting what's already being done.
No, that's right.
Not adding another event.
On the city staff, yeah, I think Bill's fidgeting over there on another city.
Supporting an event is different than, than doing an event. Something that we could, you know, Bill has reserved a spot at down, down at Bear County. We have, we have one of the position, we have, we have access to Bear County. Bear County has one week a year at La Vita and they have reserved it for Fiesta. And we are on their list of, we can have something at La Vita. That doesn't mean that we're doing it, that just means that we're making it available. Maybe we, maybe we support La Vita this year and let our citizens do that, not, not you guys, or maybe, maybe Mary Ann, and the rest of us could come and help you.
Maybe we could do a float. We could totally do a float. We could totally have parades. We could do whatever we wanted. I mean, river, river.
River parade, yeah.
Yeah.
What, you know, we're kind of speaking for the tree committee here. We should, you know, talk to them if we're going to include something along with, you know, attached to our.
Well, I think it's pretty clear. I think, I think after thinking through that, we have to be very careful of that.
Yeah, no, I, I think Xena's right and, but, but do we want to support Ray Faeo 2018, San Antonio 300?
Absolutely, why not?
And can we, just some discussion of how to.
Exactly.
Except that Mary Ann's going to be in charge of it.
It's good, Mary Ann.
All the papers say aye.
Okay, so Xena, behind the four events, support Ray Faeo 2018 and SA 300. Perfect. Okay, maintain a new and improved city website. Is it now still new?
No.
It's supposed to be crossed out, city.
Agreed.
Okay, okay, got you. And evaluate additional website applications, okay? Great. Any, any other thoughts on that? Conduct written engagements with citizens, recycle program, Road Runner stickers, key numbers, iInfo.
What is key numbers?
I don't know what that is.
Budget and, and. Weren't we saying like critical in numbers?
Key data, key, okay, like budget, like.
So that was your comment from last year, recycle should be accomplished, Road Runner should be sent out. So maybe there's some other ideas that for next year you want to be more specific, but that, that's kind of just examples. You probably leave it like that. But if you have something that you really want to target, that would be helpful.
Well, anything related to MuniTract, anything related to the marquee, stuff we just talked about. Let's, let's engage in two-way communication with residents.
Well, we, you know, the Road Runner's a part of this as well, so.
Towne Land? I think you should certainly put Towne Land down there.
Okay.
We're going to be doing public hearings, a number of five or six.
Okay. Is that fine? Okay, adopt a comprehensive, conduct a, continue to conduct website survey capability. Website survey, continue to conduct website surveys capability.
It's capability cross.
Takeout, takeability.
Yes, so continue to conduct websites.
Marking out capability?
Strike, yeah, capability at the end.
So what are we going to be conducting surveys on?
Whatever council authorizes.
Or Bill.
Okay.
Okay, well, again, I would just say, we have some good items here tonight that we've discussed where those could be, we could, we could conduct website surveys.
Okay.
And that'll get you some information, but if we're, how are we doing that again? Are we, we're doing iInfo and telling them to go, which is only going to be a handful of people versus all of our residents, but it's a way to start something.
Well, I know on the Nextdoor, whatever, there was a survey monkey that was related to.
Yeah, we, we did Nextdoor, iInfo, the Road Runner had an article.
And it's also on the website, so if anybody's looking at the website, so.
Okay.
It's about what you have to do.
Don't we have a Facebook?
Yes, we did.
And how did, how many responses did we get the last time we did a survey?
And Twitter.
I think we're over 400.
Is this on the recycle one you're referring to? So 400, sure, good.
The number's wrong, but I think.
But some are near.
For the recycle brush, that's the highest registration we have. About 250, 275 for civic notices, or basically.
No, 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 but how many people actually responded to the survey?
We're talking about the response to the survey, yeah.
I'm on iInfo contacts.
Sorry.
So iInfo is how many, 275?
On the civic notices, each initiative is a select.
Right, right.
My highest one is brush, in a course of emergency. So of course recycling information is like 400. That's the highest one I have.
So when you referenced a number, you weren't referencing a response, right?
No.
For the recycle, you actually answered that.
Approximately 400 surveys that were submitted into the recycle.
So responses to us?
Responses to us.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
I haven't talked to her since like two weeks on this.
On what?
There was a very few questions, are you happy with your-
I, I know, but on what media? Was it on iInfo, was it on-
Survey comes.
Survey on.
Where I saw the survey was on Nextdoor.
I saw it on Nextdoor.
And there was a link to it and you opened up and you didn't serve it.
And I had it on iInfo too.
Yeah.
I, I responded on iInfo.
Okay. Adopt a comprehensive plan, town plan for 2017 and future years.
If that language was from your motion that was approved, I tried to use the language that council actually acted on.
Can, can we take the paren- parentheses off the town plan and eliminate the blue plan? Because we're talking about adopting a-
Yeah, yeah, adopt a comprehensive strike plan, remove the parentheticals, town plan for 2017 and future years.
So how would it read, Mike?
Adopt a comprehensive town plan for 2017 and future years.
Okay.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm-
Is that what you wanted, Mike?
abused then, because what I heard in the meeting, and I asked several times, was, are we doing a whole new town plan? Because that's what this sounds like, am I incorrect? And I'm asking you guys, because y'all drafted it.
Yeah.
Well, it's gonna be a comprehensive plan, it doesn't mean we're starting from scratch to re-doing it.
We starting over, yeah.
Okay, so it, is, okay, so why would we take out amend? Why wouldn't we just say amend the town plan for 2017 and future years?
It's an amendment and restatement is what this is.
So do you want to say amend and restate the town plan for 2017 and future years?
That's fine.
This, this, I, I'm only just telling you, the council made a motion and then this is the exact language, except for the town plan in print.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't, I'm fine with that.
This document can say whatever we want, if we want to say amend and restate, um, amend and restate the town plan?
But why wouldn't you make it match what we voted on as a council?
No, I'm saying we could do anything that we want, you know, this is a different document, this is a budgetary document, this is a budgetary document, it can say things differently than-
But why would you when we have a motion that we voted on?
No, I, I don't disagree, I'm just saying, we can say what you want to. Okay, who wants to do adopt and who wants to do amend and restate? Amend and restate?
Wait, I just want to know what planning and zoning is doing, because my understanding is that they don't think of it as redoing and recreating and, and having a comprehensive town plan.
I've heard him at a couple of the PNZs and I've heard, I think, more along the lines of they're going to begin reviewing the town plan.
To amend?
Well, problem.
Reviewing and updating, reviewing and-
Well, they haven't really got it for, because they're just taking it one section at a time.
Right.
And I don't know where they've actually gotten, there's gonna be the town, there's gonna be the public meetings, so it's more, I think they're just kind of looking at the whole thing.
So this is just-
And they're, they're actually, I think he said, said like, he's not here anymore, he could clear it up easily, because he was saying things like, there, there may be parts of it that we don't need to even look at.
Do you want to leave the, the way it is right now, and we'll come back and we'll talk about it and Bill will have an opportunity to, to talk with Mike before our next council meeting, and so at 5:00 we'll come back to this item on the 26th, is that okay?
Because I assume when PNZ goes through it, they're gonna make recommendations to amend it and then we are going to adopt it or not adopt it.
Yeah.
And it will be a comprehensive plan.
Yeah, that's kind of what I do.
Okay.
Because he specifically said there may be things in the plan that they-
They don't need to do.
Don't even need to even really look at.
Okay, are we ready to go to page 13? Okay, mitigate storm, stormwater runoff. Uh, first item, approve a priority plan.
Prioritize.
Are we fine, a priorities, prioritize plan, are we fine there?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, next item, are we fine with begin drainage improvements? Okay, we have the strikeout, everybody okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, provide maintenance of our storm water, uh, storm water to include inlets, okay, everybody fine with that?
Mm-hmm.
Conduct brush cleaning projects as required and within capacity to improve-
Capability.
Yeah, capability, are we fine with that? Yep. We struck additional items, are there other items that we need to consider on the storm water?
So I guess conduct brush clearing projects as required and within capability is the fact that it's-
It's a replacement for those two that are struck, because again, we're looking at getting the, the drainage approved, you know, we're looking at getting KFW's assessment of the drainage concerns and then prioritizing them and then approving a plan and then based upon that beginning drainage improves. And so, it, it was an idea that we could easily conduct these brush clearing projects bent up to Cliffside, Cliffside, and Oakwood, and Oakwood, but as two years have gone by, we haven't done that.
Yeah, I know, because my neighbor calls me regularly.
Yeah, so I'm not saying that we're not going to do it or we don't want to do it, I'm just back off a little bit, conduct as required and within capability, because-
It's on private property.
It's harder than it reads.
Yeah. Okay, are they-
So are we not going to do that, but then hope to Cliffside to-
Well, we're considering it, but I want to get, first of all, I'd like to get the KFW engineers' real assessment of, is that really gonna help if we did that? You know, it would make it cleaner, but is that really contributing to backing up the water, or whatever it may be, and then addressing that?
Okay.
It's maybe something that we're really don't need, you know, you're gonna do something that's not gonna really have any of that.
So we want them to designate whether that's gonna be impactful.
My only concern is as required and within capability and you're taking out budgeting for it, so you're basically saying it's not important, we're not gonna budget for it, it's not gonna be a priority anymore. And then you're gonna wait till you get the KFW report and then if it says it is really important that you do that, then we have to go back and budget for third party because we decided staff, staffing won't allow it to be done.
Well, we have, we have capital improvement funds for drainage and it has to be prioritized and then figure out, okay, what we do, and that may be, and they may come back and say, you know, that would be a great idea and you can do that, and then, and then we would go through and get assessments and contracts and whatever it may be, but none of the drainage improvements will be budgeted because we don't have a plan yet and we haven't prioritized it.
Okay.
So that's kind of where I'm at.
Is, is that assessment process specifically or sufficiently, sufficiently addressed earlier in the water infrastructure items? Or do we need to include it here? Because you've just told, you've said four times that our engineers are basically reviewing what's gonna go on here. Is that assessment process ongoing? Will it be completed before the budget cycle begins? Do we need to address it at this level or has it been sufficiently addressed in the water department? Because this is a different type of, this is different than the water.
This isn't water, but this, this is, this is called the water, yeah, we, we addressed it in the, in the infrastructure piece, but-
Okay, so we don't need to say anything about it again?
We'll receive the briefing September-ish, and so then it's a matter of, okay, the, the action required is for council then to approve a prioritize plan, I mean, you know, so I, I believe this fiscal year we'll have the assessment from KFW, then we'll be briefing and initial process of approval, and then it, begin drainage improvements will require, if, if likely, a budget amendment based upon what?
Okay, so, so are we really saying provide maintenance of our storm water to include inlets, ensuring proper drainage in our water system, including, uh, brush clea-, uh, brush clearing projects? You know, do we need to say anything other than it, that we're going to do? We've got all this stuff in there, but it really comes into, uh, including inlets and channels, ensuring drainage and conducting brush clearing. Do, can we just add, uh, and conducting brush clearing projects and then just strike the rest of this? Because it's only within your capabilities that you can do those things. Do you need it as, do you need all those words or can't we just cut it down to three that we add to the prior sentence?
I just, it was a sub-bullet, meaning subordinate to add another one and I can do it if council wants, I believe.
I, I'm just, you know, just get it, keep it simple, was what I was suggesting. We said a whole lot of things and we really said, conduct brush clearing projects as a part of the including.
You could certainly, redundant is to improve stormwater drainage, because you've covered it in the previous one, so I, that one's easy and I don't know, I mean, I don't, we can delete the whole bullet as far as I'm concerned, but I don't-
You could leave the bullet and then designate-
Delete it, because you're, you're providing, you know, that, it doesn't matter, I mean-
The way we ma-, the way we maintain stormwater inlets is by conducting brush clearing.
I wanted to maintain it on the radar by putting it in there, that's, that's why I kind of did it, but I didn't want to simply say we're gonna do those two pieces, although that's in my mind.
Okay, uh, include inlets and channels by, by brush clearing projects, comma, in, you know, ensuring proper main, uh, drainage in our water shifts. I'm, I'm fine with the way it's written, but, you know-
But there could be culverts, there could be other things that that top bullet-
Applies.
Applies to, you know, we have, we have low water crossings, we have which are channels, we have, we do have some culverts under Northwest Military Highway and that might have to be considered in that project. There's some other options that Brandon knows about where you might need to put some culverts which we don't have, so, you know.
Well, I think we need, I think we leave it and we put a budget.
Well, you've actually, you've actually enhanced it because you've said not only provide maintenance, uh, but to provide enhancements. If we're going to be installing culverts-
That's the second bullet, begin drainage improvements. So that's already covered up there.
Okay, then-
I would think.
Yeah.
And the maintenance can include in, uh, inlets, culverts and channels if that's necessary.
Why not just add after, into our water shifts, just add to include necessary brush clearing as we require?
I'm, I'm good with that.
To include-
Necessary brush clearing.
To include, uh, required or necessary clearing brush or something like that.
As, as new for-
Well, we already said as ness-, included, to include necessary brush clearing.
That works.
Hey, okay.
Got it.
Okay, perfect, uh, anything else on mitigation of stormwater runoff? Okay, we're into this about two and a half hours, are we ready to go home? Because the last two pages are the items that we went over at the very beginning.
Yeah.
Now I use-
We've got 7.53.
So what else do you have?
Okay, which brings us to 5.3. Bill, when are we gonna, when do you want us to meet again?
Well, you know we're gonna meet before the council meeting on the, uh, 24th, and then we have a, uh, potentially scheduled meeting in June that I think we, we need to have, um, so that would be, uh, I'm sorry.
June 20th.
June 26.
26.
26.
Oh, you're talking about-
July 12. And so I think we do need to have a session where we're talking capital replacement funds, police fire and public works, uh, so I modified that to public works, but, uh, that would be my recommendation, but that's really another opportunity for me, the last opportunity for the city manager to post budget on the 3rd of August.
It's July 12.
Okay, uh, does everybody have their calendars with them to where they can, can make sure we can get at least four there?
Wednesday isn't-
It's a Wednesday, yeah.
Yeah, it's good for me.
What time?
I think, you know, 5:00 works best for us and it gives you, you know, it's early in the day, you get more energy, but 6:30 may be the best time for your schedules, I mean.
I don't care, 5:00's fine with me yet.
We shoot for 5 hours.
What else want to do?
We moved the PNZ meeting to July 12.
What's that?
We rescheduled the July meeting, July 5th to July 12.
Uh, yeah, just-
That's the one, though.
Yeah, planning and zoning, it's planning and zoning, yeah.
Yeah, we did schedule the PNZ here Wednesday at 12.
Oh.
Good catch.
Okay.
We could do it, uh, the 11th or the 14th.
Doesn't matter.
11th, well, we're, my wife has eyes her-
Okay, let's, how about the 13th?
13, well, the 13th is, uh, is my-
How about the 10th?
Thwack.
Oh, that's thwack.
Sorry.
I can do, I can do 13.
I can do 11, 12, or 13.
Well, one time on the 13th, if it's 6:30, I'm, I can-
Then let's do 6:30.
I can make it, I, I've got a, I'll get a cancer screening, skin cancer screening that day.
Okay.
But it's at 3, so.
It's 6 o'clock?
6.
So this is the 13th?
Yeah.
6 o'clock, yeah, I could do 6:00.
Is 6 o'clock okay with everybody?
On the 13th, right?
Okay, are we fine with that? And Xena's gonna send us a calendar invite.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there anything else on the calendar that we want to talk about?